Proud we have gathered. And as always, it's a pleasure when we have a scout troop from one of our schools join us to begin our meeting with the appropriate patriotism. So I'd like to invite Penitent, Girl Scout Troop Number 599, to lead us in the flag salute.
Girl Scouts, attention. Audience, attention please. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, post your colors. Please put your right hand over your heart and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may now be seated. Girl Scouts, honor your flag. Color Guard, dismissed.
Come back.
Go in there.
Come back. Go in here. Sorry. I like to let them dismiss because I think it's appropriate to do the whole thing from the beginning to the end so that they get practice for it because it's important to do all the formalities of it. Then you come, you have, you come back, uh, come on up. Tell us who you are, what grade you're in, because I think it's important that people see that scouts are more than just the little brownies and Cub Scouts because you girls are a tad bit older, but it's important that you stay involved in a very important program. So introduce yourselves and tell us what grade you're in. You're from Rolling Hills School, right?
I'm Maggie, I'm in sixth grade.
Yeah.
I'm Emily, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Isabella Wouters, and I'm in the sixth grade as well.
I'm Rhiella Day, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Rachel Cobson, and I'm in sixth grade.
And you're Rolling Hills Roadrunners, right?
Yes.
Awesome. And I love how many catches you've already earned. You guys are doing a great job. You're gonna move on to get your gold award, right?
Yep.
Those are important things. Awesome. We love it. So where are your leaders? There they are. Who are they?
Mrs.
Ms. Marie and Ms. Shan.
Okay, awesome. We understand and appreciate the importance of that great partnership that our schools have with the scouting program. We know it's developing leaders for our community and for our nation, and we appreciate your dedication to the program, along with your dedication, girls, because you're learning something I hope will carry you forward in the years to come. So in honor of your presenting with us tonight, we'd like to present you with this certificate for coming to put your uniform on and do a nice, very formal job of doing our flag salute. So we'd like to thank you for being here and to recognize that participation tonight. So thank you and keep up the good work.
That troop does a lot of community service.
The word "in" is on the back there. Yes.
Checking that out, yeah, that's cool. That's what's good about scouts. I'm going to state that at this point, we had no closed session and therefore there is nothing to report from closed session. And I want to remind everyone that our board meeting is audio recorded and maybe videotaped and streamlined to the internet. We do have some slips for public comments, which we'll move into right now. Just as a reminder, we do follow rules of the quorum. The public may address the board on items of public interest within the board's jurisdiction. Per Board Bylaw 9323, individual speakers may be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. The total allowed time for public comment shall be 30 minutes. Public comments about an item on a posted agenda item will be heard at the time of the agenda item is considered by the board. Public comments about an item that is not on the posted agenda will be heard during this time. No action or discussion may take place on an item that is not on the posted agenda except as expressly authorized by law. Since the board cannot take action on items that are not on the agenda, such items will be referred to the superintendent. Persons that are wishing to address the board are invited to complete and submit the request to speak slip to the secretary, which they are also available on the reception counter. And I have three of them. They all from the same family. Shall I go, me, me, my, my, who comes up first? Jana? Who's Jana?
One.
Okay. Jana, you.
Hi. I'm Jana Yu, and I'm currently in sixth grade in Fisler School. I want to be in the pre-algebra class, and I have full confidence in being in. I have been really good in my studies, and I've been getting excellent scores in my math class. Last year, I got 100% on my math CSTs. I know I can succeed in pre-algebra class only if I get the instruction. I need algebra now so I can get a chance at time. If you just give me the class, I can prove how well I can do in math. Thank you.
The least you.
I didn't stand right there. I didn't write anything down, but I've been pursuing this since the last year, end of last year, and I have spoken with the principal at our school, Mrs. Lai. And at the end of the discussion, I was given, I guess, a promise or whatnot, that she will look into this further and that she would pull me that in the beginning of the year, she will have Mr. Uribe, he's currently a sixth grade math teacher, that he will look into this and have a close eye on Jana. At the time, we didn't have her current CST scores at the fifth grade level, but at the end of the summer, we received a score and she was, she marked 100% on the CST scores. And throughout the whole year, she had, she has received 100% on all, most of her chapter tests, quizzes and whatnot. And also during her third grade, she also received 100% on the CST scores. And she has, you know, given the math awards, you know, two, you know, sometimes two semesters out of the year. So she has shown the very strong points in the math, and I don't see why she could not be put into the higher level so that she can move, you know, that she can prepare herself for the high school. We have experienced a similar situation with my older daughter, Erin, who she's here with us, and she will be speaking right after I'm done with this. And she also was in a similar situation. She was not a gay-gifted, labeled child, but she was a strong achiever, high achiever, and she was fortunate enough to be in the gay class along with the other gay-gifted kids, identified kids. But she has shown very strong points and along with her three years, you know, of her school life in junior high school at Fisler, she has received all the excellent grades and whatnot. So she was in a similar math situation. She was put in a little lower grade. I was beginning to notice that she was not really challenging herself to, you know, to do the best because she knew that it was an easy subject for her. And I didn't want her to get in that habit of, okay, it's an easy subject, I'm not gonna study for the test. So I, you know, I met up with the teacher at that time, who was Mrs. Santian, and explained the situation. I never see her really study for the test and whatnot, and I didn't want her to get in a bad habit of, you know, doing this repeatedly. So, and she was nice enough to, I guess, you know, she looked at all her, you know, I guess, passive scores and whatnot, and she decided to give Erin another test so to, to see how, where she stands. She was given, so we discussed this in the beginning of the year, probably at the open house or back to school night, and then I guess we had a miscommunication between myself and Mrs. Santian, and I guess I was waiting for her to make the decision, but at the end, she, I guess, she was waiting for my response. So we waited, waited, and it was almost at the end of November, close to getting the end of this, you know, trimester. And I didn't want to wait any longer. And we already, you know, mentioned about this to the teacher, and I didn't want to pursue this any longer. So at that time, I, you know, gave my daughter a test. Okay, I already talked to the teacher, and I don't want, I'm not gonna talk about it more. Either it's, now it's in your head. If you want to pursue this, go ahead and talk to the teacher if you really want to pursue this higher math level. And she did, she had the courage to go up to her and talk about it, and she decided to give her a test in three days. And at that time, they covered up to like chapter eight or whatnot. She had like five, close to five to six hundred pages to cover and show herself that she could do it. And she and I, we stayed up because those are the stuff that she has not learned because she was in the wrong class.
Mrs. Yu, make a speech. Do you wish to continue? Three minutes is up. Put your microphone.
It's been a while.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. So, so she, she proved herself that she could do it. And right now, we are facing the same situation. Jana repeatedly, last, you know, few years, she has shown the strong points in math, and we do not see any reason why she has to be, I guess, held back. That is a normal class, but she can show that she can do the higher math level only if she's given a chance. So I would like to, you know, you know, that's why we came up here, to speak, you know, what's been gone through the last several months. And I have talked to Mrs. Lai and back and forth with emails, and also I have talked to her math teacher back and forth, but I was not going, getting anywhere. And I also talked, yeah, so that's why I came to the board's meeting, to speak, speak up and see what the district can help us at this situation. It seems like the school side cannot help us with this, with this situation. So thank you so much, and surely Erin will come and speak. Thank you.
Hi. Seems like you all heard about me. Because, so I did go to Fisler Middle School from, oh, Fisler Elementary and Middle School from fourth to eighth grade. I did, I was really involved in our school. But I started into student body leadership for, you know, a number of years in middle school, and I was also president for eighth grade last year, and now I'm in Sunny Hills High School. So I came here to speak to you regarding my sister's situation, which you heard about previously, and I also wanted to address that she is stronger than I was, and I had the chance to get into a higher level math, I mean, higher level of math. And I also believe that it is the school's job and the educational district's job to continually encourage and expand each student's strong points, which is clearly my sister's, she is clearly strong in math. So when, so you heard my experience, how I was able to be given the chance to move up into the eighth grade algebra class when I was in seventh grade. And it seems that Ms., the teachers and Mrs. Lai specifically, she does recognize Jana's strong points in math. However, she says Jana is not excellent enough to get into the next math program. But it seems that all the gay kids in her math grade, whether they do not pass the math test, or you know how you have to take a math test to move up into the next grade level, even if they do not pass it, and they're not as strong as, as non-gay kids, they still get into the pre-algebra, which means that all the gay kids, even though they may not have the strong abilities as some other regular students, they will still be given the chance. While strong students who are not engaged will not be given the chance because of spacing issues and whatnot. This was a different case for me when I was in sixth grade because it was more fair if whoever got past the test to move on to the next level, they are able to be given a chance in Mrs. Santian's seventh grade math room. But, so the scheduling was difficult because they're going to a seventh grade math room while they were in sixth grade, if you know. So we have, well, I had three classes, and then it was math slash science, and then they had to move out of the classroom for a short period, and then come back. So it was more fair back then though, because each student was able to give the opportunity they were given. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will obviously refer this on to the superintendent's department to locate it. Moving on, we have a school report, and that would be from Rolling Hills School. So we'll invite out the principal. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening.
Have you?
Thank you. We're happy to be here. Rolling Hills has been called a hidden gem in the hills of Fullerton, and people tell us that there's something really special about our school. Tonight, we'll be highlighting four areas that we feel will really make our school a unique learning environment for our kids. And I want to mention that it was really hard to limit our presentation to just eight minutes, six to eight minutes. We could go on and on. Oh.
Timer's on.
No pressure. We support student success in academics and in life through our great school programs and in our warm and caring community. And tonight, I've invited three wise sixth grade students to join me, Zachary Vogel, Justine Song Belon, and Isabella Wouters. So come on up, you guys. We're gonna start with Justine, who will be talking with us about the arts at Rolling Hills.
We are known as the school of visual and performing arts. We do five full-length musical theater productions, and our teachers have been trained in incorporating, in incorporating the arts into all areas of the curriculum. Teachers at Rolling Hills believe that students make meaningful connections and learn through the arts, and we know that the arts offer a great way to use important 21st century learning skills of communication, collaboration, and creativity. Last year, three of us had the opportunity to perform in a school production of 1776. I think it speaks for all of us, and I say that we will never forget the experience, and that being a part of this production brought that important time in our nation's life to history for all of us. Our plays are fun, and our history, our plays are fun, and our parents love getting involved too, from sets to costumes to makeup. They really all work together to make it a wonderful experience for us. Thank you.
And now here's Zach Vogel to talk about our gardens.
We have a beautiful campus, and our gardens provide a place for students to continue their learning. Rolling Hills teachers see our gardens as an extension of their classroom and bring, and bring all areas of the curriculum outdoors in our gardens. We grow all sorts of vegetables and some fruit, and even have an ethno-motanical garden outside my classroom. That's a garden that contains plants that are culturally significant throughout history. Students designed the garden, and we are really fortunate to have a grant from Home Depot and some wonderful volunteers to help us create the garden. We have plans for another garden that we are hoping to install behind our basketball courts. We are hoping to include a large outdoor classroom and space for lots of fruits and veggies. Our gardens are supported by Rolling Hills Education Foundation, and we have, and we have an enthusiastic group of parents and community members who help us.
So what's so special about our classrooms? Here's Isabella Wouters to tell you all about it.
Our school offers both traditional or classic classrooms and multi-age classrooms for students. We are pretty well-known for our multi-age curriculum, which is the largest in Orange County. This year, we have about 300 students in our multi-age classrooms. We work towards mastery of California State standards, just like kids in traditional classrooms do, and we focus on excellence in learning. Multi-age students stay with the same teacher or teachers for several years. Students learn through direct instruction in small groups independently, and parent volunteers are a very important part of our program. Younger students look to the older students in the class as role models and big buddies. And over time, the kids become the big, in the class, they become the older kids, and they take on the leadership role. At Rolling Hills, I've really enjoyed my, my experience in the multi-age classroom, and now I'm in sixth grade classroom, and it's not multi-age, and I'm really enjoying that as, just as much.
And now the hard part for me. At Rolling Hills, we have a wonderful group of teachers and parents and staff and community members who come together to support our kids. We have parents like Janine Wating, who organizes our fabulous garden stand. And the garden stand features fresh fruits and veggies that are grown right on our school property, and also offers items from the homes of our families. But Janine doesn't stop there. She even offers to go to the homes of community members and pick their fruits and veggies if they want to donate them to our garden stand. And incidentally, the garden stand brings in about $200 a month into our school foundation. We also have great community partners like Home Depot, and we were the recipients of a generous grant last year, which brought $10,000 and 80 volunteers to our school for a whole day. We learned that $10,000 goes a really long way when you're not paying for labor. They completed many projects across campus, like our ethno-motanical garden, which Zach told you about earlier. We have a wonderful PTA made up of parents who work tirelessly to support our school and the arts in our community, and here they are helping out in our A to Z lunch last Friday. Thanks, Amanda. It was so much fun. Our Rolling Hills Education Foundation supports our physical education, media services, garden and wellness programs through two large fundraisers a year, the 5K Challenge Run and our Pancake Breakfast. We also have a walk-a-thon and lots of family events, tech nights, family art night, and just all kinds of wonderful things going on at our school each and every day. There really is something special in the air at Rolling Hills. And I'd like to close by letting you hear from some other members of our school community.
I love Zachary. So many things going on at Rolling Hills. We have art, we have music, we have plays, we have like the classrooms, the gardens. We just have, the school has everything.
What's so special about Rolling Hills is that you can make lots of friends.
Rolling Hills uses the arts and music and all the curriculum, and I love that.
It helps kids just be nurtured and encouraged to grow.
My coaches succeed, and I think we all do a pretty good job. That's the thing.
We have beautiful gardens, and we make many friends, and we have great teachers, and our school is very artistic.
The most special thing about Rolling Hills is that we have so many kind, loving teachers.
We like the way we push students to explore their personal best through the arts.
I like the jobs that we do at school, and I think it's really fun.
Going out to read stacks.
That really is with the volunteers and all the parents.
The teachers, and they're nice to us. They're a nice place that we have.
They're so much fun, and they're good learners.
Your classrooms, it can be a nice environment where you can go out and play. It's just a great place for us. We learn a lot of fun stuff. And we do some fun things, and I'm very much future. And I get to see all my friends every year.
The volunteers are so pretty. And the children here are very nice.
What's special is field trips.
I love living in the gardens.
The children are really funny, still get to learn, but they get to learn in a really fun way. The children are always really nice and really smart.
They care for me, and everybody's nice to me.
It's a place with a lot of joy, learning, a lot of creativity. I love scouts.
I think I'm very needed here. I need to pass one of you.
I like Rolling Hills because it's a great place to learn.
The people at Rolling Hills are special at Rolling Hills. It's best. End story.
Thank you.
And now the Rolling Hills staff, I see a few of you in the audience. Stand up.
And everybody who's here supporting Rolling Hills, stand up.
We applaud you for your efforts in providing such a warm, nurturing, creative, recess-oriented field trip. Art-loving environment.
Gardens.
Yeah. And I was impressed that they could even learn about a new kind of garden. That's impressive too. So good job to all of you. We applaud your excellence, and we do know that the kids there are exceeding, and we are so appreciative of all your efforts that go into that. And kids, keep up the great work. We like seeing you be proud of your school, and we want you to do your school proud too. So thank you for joining us this evening. Thanks very much. Good job. It's always fun to kick off the meeting with such great words of inspiration and excitement and joy in learning. So moving down our agenda, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our superintendent's report. So.
I want to follow all of you. I was gonna say, Fortham is a great place today. It's got great principals, great teachers, great.
Right? Right, right, Laura?
And Rob, and Sarah. And recess.
And recess.
Other than that, I have no, no special report.
No special report. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the information from our board of trustees, and I'll start here with Hilda. I'm sure you have an announcement about some big event happening here in the next few weeks.
Minutes, minutes. But before I do that, Mrs. Frye, what was Lincoln doing in 1776?
Abraham.
Wrong era.
Few students. Okay. First of all, I hope you all took a moment to think about the importance of Christopher Columbus. He made a difference for this country, and it's nice that we celebrate him. I want to, of course, mention, what date this month do you think I want to mention? Anybody have a guess? Laura Lynn, what date do you think I mentioned?
October 29.
October 29. That's the pin auction. I hope you've all gone online and bought tickets for it, and know that it's gonna be better than ever. If you've been downtown recently, you've seen the hards all up and down Harper Boulevard, and they are fabulous this year. So take out a loan, come plan on buying one. They'll look good on any school campus or backyard, I assure you. They really are beautiful, and we appreciate the work done by the artists in donating their time and energies to make those so that our, all the arts program can continue. We heard joyfully just now on how much students appreciate those arts and the efforts that our foundation makes in that area. Last but not least, I want to remind you, and I hope that you all have this on your school calendars, whether online or if you can be sending home newsletters. We have an e-waste event at the Derris Ditch Junior High on the first Saturday in November. It costs people nothing to get rid of any sort of e-waste they have. They'll get a tax deductible receipt that makes them even happier. And we're thrilled to take, figure the better because we're paid by the weight, and that money goes to the technology foundation in order to pay for things like streaming video in everybody's classroom. So mark your dates and come out and enjoy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Barryman.
Thank you. I want to echo what Hilda said about the arts program, so I encourage everybody to come out. It's one of the, the fieldlet events of the year. I always enjoy going to that because everyone's always so happy. Artists are usually very happy people, so it's. Artists are usually very happy people, so it's actually very nice. I wanted to thank publicly Kaboom in September. And I mentioned to talk about this earlier. They were able to fund or to coordinate another renovation of one of our playgrounds here in Fullerton. So, in conjunction with Kaboom, the company Kaboom, the city of Fullerton, the Boys and Girls Club and the Foresters, they were able to renovate Ford Park on, I think it was the seventeenth of September. So, I was able to go out there and help out in the morning. And it's just so wonderful and heartwarming to see all of the people in the community coming together for the good of our kids. And to give our kids a safe environment, somewhere they can play, somewhere they can go, and have it be a space for them. So, again, I want to thank them for doing that. It was why, speaking of health, it was Walk to School Week last week. Was it last week or the week before? Oh, the rainy day, that's exactly right. I want to thank Pacific Drive for allowing me to come out and walk with them down, up and down the street right before the rain started. And then over to Laguna Road to celebrate with them as the rain came down very hard there. So, thank you, principals. Thank everyone who involved, who helped us and walked to school day. It's a reminder to parents that walking to school is really not a big deal. You just have to leave the house a little earlier. I always know that it was always hard. You know, you live around the corner and it's so much easier just hop in your car and drop the kids off. But we do really need to start to let our kids know that healthy living is part of walking to school and get rid of some of the accidents that happen, the road rage out there. Start your work, start your day out by walking to school. So, thank you guys. And I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Thompson.
No report.
No report. And Trustee Meyer?
Yes, I had the opportunity to attend Acacia's AYP party at nine twenty-four. And we had a great time. All the kids were jumping around, dancing. And they had cheers for all the scores that they made. And what a clever idea, it happened at nine twenty-four. It did last a little longer than nine minutes and twenty-four seconds, but well worth the time. I also went to Laguna Road and I got to walk the kindergarteners from the old longs all the way to the school with the umbrella in hand. And all the little kindergarteners had a really good time in the rain. I think the rain made it a little more fun, actually. Good luck with conference week. I know it's a busy time for principals and teachers and it's a long day. And hopefully those are going successfully. I'm going to have the opportunity this weekend to go on the Metropolitan Water District trip, which teaches you all about water in California and how we get it and what happens with it. Three of our teachers wrote a grant last year to attend. And so, I'm accompanying them on the trip this weekend. So, the three teachers will be able to bring back information on water. And they get a lot of material and it's a great opportunity. And thank you to the Fullerton Excellence Foundation for giving them the grant to be able to attend this. The principals, I'm looking for the principals and I'm encouraging the principals to have their teachers apply for the FTF grant that's coming up and the FEF grant. Both foundations will be sending those out soon. On Monday, your office managers will be receiving the PDF files for the grants. So, those all need to go out to the teachers. And there's really a lot of money to be had this year. And encourage them to apply for them because those are some of the great things that can be done. I don't have any dates for the all the arts or I don't have any dates for the Fullerton Technology, but they'll be coming, all right? And I want to remind everybody, the upcoming health fair, flu shots, October nineteenth, one to three. Mark doesn't give you the shot, but don't you let everybody in?
I don't let everybody in unless they've got their card.
That's right.
But I can monitor, yeah? First two hours.
And you need to have your insurance card or whatever it is for flu shots. And that's up in Drea?
It's in their family. It's in Drea at the community center.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Moving down our list, our next items would be from ETA. Should I? Not lose, Judge George. FETA, you have a report for us this evening?
I am. Good evening to all of you. You have in front of you, with the exception of Janie, your CTA magazine, The Educator. And I want to draw your attention to page twenty-three, which has a picture of our very own Andy Montoya. And Andy is a math teacher at La Dara Vista Junior High. And he is being recognized as one of California's young leaders in education. Andy's insights include the validity of working within the union. It's a good thing for younger teachers. And he stresses the importance of being a part of a collective group in order to have a voice within the community on issues of concern to education. Andy deserves congratulations for the stand he is taking in support of FETA and the teaching profession. The end of this month, the district office and FETA will collaborate and send two teams to two events of great importance to education. There's a group that's going to San Diego for a two-day workshop on Marzano Strategies and Teaching Assessment and Evaluation. And another group, unfortunately, we aren't going quite so exotic a place. We're going to Blaine Park. We'll be attending an institute that's sponsored by the ABC School District. We began this endeavor last year. What ABC has done is developed a partnership between the union and the district office. It took them about ten years to accomplish this, but that's the way their district works. And it's very positive, collaborative, and they get a whole lot of things done. Its purpose is to increase communication between these groups. And this year, we're going back with hoping to get even more information that will benefit the Fullerton School District and its teachers and other staff. Both of these events enable our district to set an example to other districts that communication is improved when there is collaboration. And it's our students that are the bottom line. And they are the ones who benefit from an improved morale when the district and the unions work together in partnership. FETA looks forward to a continued partnership between us and the district office from which we build a stronger school district. And that's my report.
Thank you for joining us. CSNA, your representative from CSNA. Okay, first of all, is there a report tonight?
You know, I got this rooting team thing. They're all back. Good evening. We are continuing with everything we do. Right now, we're in the middle of conferences, as you know. They're going well. I have not heard any principals complaining. We love to talk to our parents. And we love our communities to come together and have all that time. So, thank you for giving us those conferences days. We really do need those. We are moving forward with all of the activities. Every student succeeding. We are working on those. And we're all going to the dinner, I guess, on the nineteenth. I heard we're having like about thirteen people. And Bob Johnson is also going. He already RSDP'd himself. But I'm looking forward to that and the speaker. And hoping, I don't know if anybody's going to the administration one, the co-administration one before the dinner. There's a little workshop, so I'm looking forward to doing that. I missed it last year. And then, of course, the pin auction, we are coming. Thank you very much for having that before Halloween. That's good.
Thank you very much for joining us. The next item, of course, is always to remind everyone, and I know that all of you principals were the ones that posted all the information about all the happenings that are going on. Lots of good things going on, whether it's plays or garden work or auction of parts for the arts, stuff happening in all of our schools. I would entertain a motion at this point to approve our minutes from the September twenty-seventh meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? That's hearing five oh. Our consent agenda is items one A through one M. I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items anyone would like to discuss?
Please pull one H.
One H. It's been moved that we pull one H. We shall hold out one H. So, we would have our consent agenda be one A through one M with H pulled. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Is that a five oh?
Yeah. So, one H? There are some questions?
I have some questions. Is the only component of this test that's being administered?
Yes.
The survey.
The survey. The one that was given to us, just that one elementary section that was given to us. And in an email, it's an email between you and I, Dr. Huby, you made a comment more or less along the lines of that you didn't know that we had the flexibility to change the wording of this consent form. Although you did not say that we could not. You said you didn't know that we could. Do you know whether there's some legal reason that we could not modify the wording of this document? Well, we did modify it some way. But it is, it is something that the State Department contracts with WestEd. And WestEd is the company that does this survey. So, for us to go through and make major modifications, I was not comfortable making major modifications. But we did modify it to say that this is a perception survey. So, it was modified based upon your input to the point that I felt comfortable with. The document, would you agree that the document appears to be from us? That it's going out to parents? It appears to be from us. And it says, "This is a very important survey that will help promote better health and well-being among our youth and improve the school learning environment and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence." I have a very difficult time understanding how these questions, which purported to be anonymous, are going to help improve any of those things. For example, there are questions like, "Did you eat breakfast this morning?" It asks a child to throw his parents under the bus and report whether or not they're legally putting into a car seat or a seatbelt. When you ride in a car, do you wear a seatbelt? When you ride a bicycle, do you wear a helmet? Can you explain to me, do you agree that this survey will help promote better health and well-being among your youth and improve school learning and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence? I do. And as I mentioned to you in communication that this, the information, there's over five hundred thousand students that are surveyed. And the information that's going from a survey brings to light the kinds of things that are happening throughout the state of California. Things such as eating breakfast. As you know, if students aren't eating breakfast, then it's hard for them to learn. So, what it does is it gives information to us as a district to get student input on their perception as to the kinds of things that they need in order to be successful in school. And this information, since it has so many students that participate throughout the state, is used in a number of different journals, since I communicated to you and the board earlier, for information with regard to different studies and different things that are done throughout the state and also internationally. Do you know, do you know when this sexual, this sex module is administered by this organization? There is a sex, a sex module that is a survey that... Yeah, that's not a module. And I think I communicated that the only module that we are administering is the one module that is required by the state of California. There are other modules that we do not administer. Do you know who administers them? I don't. Do you know why it exists? I don't. Do you have any explanation as to why this very same organization associated with this survey, even though we don't give this test, asks questions of some junior high kids about what percentage of students in your school do you think have had sexual intercourse? For example, you might think about how many a group of a hundred students or three classrooms. Please indicate whether you agree or not with following statements. For teens your age, abstinence, not having sexual intercourse is a better choice than having sexual intercourse. But that's exactly why we are not administering that module. But you acknowledge that this organization developed this quiz for junior high students, the same organization that develops the quiz that we're going to be giving. You know, I don't know the module C that you're talking about or the module, the other modules. I got it right off the same note. I don't know the other modules because we are not administering it. And I know that it is conducted by WestEd. WestEd is a very, is a very well-recognized company that does all kinds of surveys. And that's why when we looked at the survey, the only thing that we are administering is the part that is required by the state of California. We are not administering any of the other modules. But you don't know, you don't know when they administer those? I have, I have not a clue because we don't administer it. Can you tell me which question we're asking that's going to help us reduce violence and how it's going to help us reduce violence? Which question? I think in general, I think in general, it's all the questions. I know that there are a number of questions in grade five. There are about sixty-five different questions. And at grade seven, there are approximately a hundred and fourteen questions. So, I couldn't point out this specific question. I just know that the answers in general do give us a direction as to the perceptions of our students in the Fullerton School District and help us in planning and help us in better meeting the needs of our kids. Well, I'm not understanding how we reduce violence with this information.
I think that there's questions there that talk about their perception of violence on their campus.
If you have, if you have a school that is ranking high in students' perception on campus in the playground that there are being bullied or there's violence, then that data is used, I would assume, in our school plans to be able to come up with a, some kind of plan to address that. Whether it be a perception or not, there's an issue and the school plan should address it. And I, and I do know that they get information from them. Right, and they get information from those surveys for their school plans. I mean, I've seen that in the past.
In a broader scale, it's also used for grants, both federal and state grants, to work on things like obesity, bullying, et cetera, that school districts also may participate in. Or programs are designed for those that help this district, not directly because of one answer on a survey, but on the cumulative responses on the survey nationwide or statewide.
Right, they will get a trend.
Correct.
And there are trends and they publish it.
I think the major issue is that we are charred to provide safe and secure schools. So, it's important that we find out from our students whether or not they feel safe. Do you think that any bad feelings are created in individual families' home when we ask a child a question, "Do you think drinking alcohol, beer, wine, liquor is bad for a person's health?" And their parents, "Did they have a glass of wine today?" I don't know that I can answer that question because I haven't had anyone ever complain about it. And I've been in different districts that have administered this very same survey. And I have never received a complaint about, about issues that parents bring up about the questions that are being asked. The other thing is that this, this survey is not something that is required if parents do not want their students to participate. So, if a parent says, "I do not want my students to participate in it," they do not have to. Would you not agree that the phrase, "This is a very important survey that will help promote better health and well-being among your youth and improve the school learning environment and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence," would, would lead parents to believe that it's a fairly innocuous test?
It's a survey, it's a survey, not a test.
Survey, innocuous survey that they shouldn't be worried about? No, it's simply a... That doesn't lead them to believe that? I don't know what they believe, but it doesn't lead me to believe that. It's simply a survey to give us more information in order to better meet the learning needs of our students.
It's a little info on this because I administered this survey as a teacher. There was a certain percent of parents who didn't want to get involved because they didn't know enough about it, so they would just opt out of it. And every so often, a student would come up and say, "Well, this question about drinking..." And I said, "You know, if you don't feel comfortable answering it, you're the blame." You know, I never...
That's a great example of kids being concerned about it or not wanting to get their parents in trouble.
So, so they would come and ask.
Some of them may not. Some of them may just answer it or answer it correctly because they're nervous about it. The questions are available, the questions are available for parents to review. And if parents do have concerns and they can ask that their students are not participating, or they, students do not have to answer every question? Parents just say, "Don't answer the question." There's a difference between it being available and us making parents, proactively making parents aware what the content of this would be. I would imagine if we, if we surveyed parents as to what they suspected might be in the survey, it would mostly be about vegetables, air... it would mostly be about vegetables, dairy products, and kind of the food that they eat, and the exercise that they get, not whether or not their kids believe that alcohol is bad for you or not. What would happen if we did not approve this interview?
Well, we do receive dollars as part of the, as part of state monies. We are required to participate in the survey, or at least administer the survey. And that's why, again, parents can opt their students out. Students are not required to participate in it.
So, so my question again is, what would happen if we did approve this interview?
Well, if we don't follow requirements set forth by the state of California, then it jeopardizes our funding. And we do receive some funds in order to administer...
Do you know what, do you know what would happen initially if we didn't approve it? I mean, what, you know, if you didn't approve it, what would you do, what would you do tomorrow?
It jeopardizes our funding. It's required by the state of California, and it jeopardizes the funding that we receive.
Right, I'm not required to vote yes.
True. And parents are required to have...
If three of us voted no, what would you do tomorrow to deal with the fact that we're potentially going to violate a state directive? How would you handle that?
Well, we'd be out of compliance, and I'd have to, I'd have to do additional follow-up. But I know it would put us out of compliance, and it would jeopardize our funding.
Do you believe that we could, if we chose, change the wording of the letter?
You already did, it's not new.
No, I know, but that's not what I would want to do. If we changed the sentence, I've read several times, I will remember the reading again, to, "This survey is purported to promote better health and well-being among our youth, improve the school's learning environment, and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence." This survey is mandated by the U.S. Department of Education in order to apply the Title Nine, No Child Left Behind Act. Fulton School District takes no position on validity or usefulness of the survey. Do you believe there's any reason that it would be illegal for us to change that opening, that second sentence to that?
I don't know that it would be illegal, but I already told you earlier that I didn't agree with the fact that we should put that in there. I believe it takes away from the fact that we are asking students to participate in a required survey that's sponsored by the California Department of Education. So by asking them to participate, and then at the end saying that the force minister does not support it, sends a conflicting message.
I'd love to make a comment about it. One thing I didn't like about the survey, and nothing to do with the question, because I do believe tasking about alcohol is expected by parents. If you want to find out how to improve your school environment, I don't think that's a shock. But it's very long, it's very onerous. And I think at some point, when you give this to a fifth-grade child, by question 15, they may just start circling things because it's much too long, it's much too onerous, it's much too detailed, it's so repetitive. I know it's repetitive in different ways to get the answers to be more significant. But if I were to send it to the state, I would say to them, "It's not designed in a way to get totally honest answers from fifth-grade to seventh-grade students." But that's just a personal thing.
Parents will be worried by the 15th question.
Oh, I started reading this, and I kept going through, and I'm like, "Am I done yet?" And so...
I probably feel that about any test they take, sorry.
Survey.
Yeah, but just one more test.
Survey.
Age of testing. And, and that's...
Well, I agree, it is a long, it is a long survey, but remember, we didn't create the survey.
No, 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 I'm not complaining to you, that's why I said I would send that message to the state because they're involved in this company.
And it would be nice if they would listen, but...
But if we, at least if we sent it to them, that's one step.
Mr. Birch has already looked at some of those same questions, because that's his position as well. And there is research that shows that a number of people feel that it's lengthy. But there's also statistical analysis that shows that it's, I think, within a 3% to 5% margin of error. And I'm not sure if I'm quoting that exactly. So you're not the first person also of that same recognition?
But if you're looking at margin of error, that's taking for granted that somebody thinks these answers are correct.
I understand.
Every kid in one classroom could say, "Hey, let's everybody write that our parents abuse us." And then for fun, they could all do it. And, you know, I just, I'm not sure if kids don't turn out in some form on this test, and I'm not sure if the validity is as accurate. 3% on the standard here, I'd question that part. Anyway, but it fits the law.
You know, in light of the fact that some funding is dependent upon, probably dependent upon us passing this, I would, I would argue to the board that we have no data that would imply that this test allows us to improve circumstances with violence, drug abuse, sexual abuse, any other kind of abuse. I would also argue that I don't believe anybody in this district argues that we have an alcohol problem, or a drug problem, or a violence problem in this district. I would further argue that, in light of the fact that this is directly intrusive to the lawful and, and when moderate, reasonable behavior of parents, that we have no business intruding into the homes of families and making parents, potentially making parents abandon their children. I would also argue that this letter implies that we believe that this survey is effective, is a good thing, and we make no mention in this letter of the fact that it asks intrusive questions. That we simply give a benign message. That we simply tell the parents in this district that we aren't opposing it. We're not recommending whether you have your child take it or not. We simply are letting you know that it must be given, that we're doing this because we're mandated by law, and that we change the sentence. "This is a very important survey that will help promote..." This is a motion, that we change the second sentence. "This is a very important survey that will help promote better health and well-being among our youth, improve the school learning environment, and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence." Two, "The survey is purported to promote better health and well-being among our youth, improve the school's learning environment, and combat problems such as drug abuse and violence." "The survey is mandated by the U.S. Department of Education in order to apply the Title Nine, No Child Left Behind Act." "Fulton School District takes no position," not negative, just no position, "on validity or usefulness of the survey." And we move that we change that sentence so that, so that we aren't misleading, or potentially misleading our parents.
I've got here that we were changing it to, "This survey is..."
Oh, he's making a motion to change it to his wording. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies.
I think Hilda's question is that when they went back, when we had information on this, there was a...
The survey is required of schools in California to be administered in order to be in compliance with provisions of the No Child Left Behind Act of 2001, which is in accordance with what you've said, Chris. It is a very important, it is a very important perception survey. Perhaps the word "very" could be omitted. That is done anonymously. It provides useful data to develop programs for youth that, one, promote a healthy lifestyle, two, improve the school learning environment, and, three, combat problems such as drug abuse and violence. It provides, it's pretty strong. If the superintendent wanted, he could change it to...
Are you making a motion?
No, I'm just having a dialogue. I'm just having a dialogue, because I don't think we need to dictate to the superintendent. I just want to share my ideas, and maybe somebody else has ideas on that particular piece. I was not unhappy that you brought this up, Chris, because I think that this is a far improvement to what it said. I'm not sure it should be on our letter yet, or on the letter yet, or long with the letter yet, should read the company that made it up. Those are all your calls, but at least we're having a dialogue to discuss how we can make it more inviting for our parents to get the proper information, plus comply with law. There are things that you don't want to comply with in law because laws are bad, really bad, and somebody needs to take a stand. I, I just don't find this one of them. So maybe those are some ideas, and maybe some of you all have other ideas.
Well, I can tell you, I will, I will support anything that states that we think it's, that we think it's valuable at all. The most, the furthest I would go is supporting something that says we take a, no position on its validity. I'm gonna, I'm going to point out, and I don't want to read for the record this entire two-page survey, because it is generated by the same organization, for junior high students, same logo, same...
But this is not our survey.
No, this is not a survey we're giving.
But then it's irrelevant to us.
No, it is a survey that they generated, that is given sometimes. It is, the purpose of it is to, the purpose of it, of me reading it, is so that we can understand the mindset of the people that we hire to, and contract with to generate a certain...
The state hired them.
Okay, well, except we're doing an MOU, except we're talking about doing an MOU with them.
But Chris, this, maybe some of the teachers want other things out to them.
Look, if this thing said you should murder people, you would think it was driven. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't go that far. But I want to read this, because...
But how does that relate to what you're doing tonight?
Kind of like, kind of like when I heard some people say to me that they thought that our state legislature would never go so far as to mandate that our textbooks must put in historical figures because they are homosexual or transgender? Not just create a law that says that you can't keep anybody out because, but actually must put them in because they are homosexual or transgender?
But people have read that, so why would you be reading it?
Read it.
I mean, we have this, don't we?
I want it on video, and I want the crowd hearing. I want, I want, I want to read this.
But it's not relevant to our school.
I think it's relevant.
It's, it's not a survey that we're administering to any of our students.
It's a survey done by the organization that we are interviewing an MOU with for junior high students.
But what's the name on the top of that? The organization...
All Healthy Kids Survey.
I thought you said that you pulled this from a different organization.
It's the same org, it's Module F from the same survey.
We aren't giving, we are not giving totally knowledge, we, we can't give this module.
I'm gonna read it. "About what percent of students in your school grade do you think have had sexual intercourse? For example, you might think about how many in a group of 100 students or three classrooms. Please indicate whether you agree or not with the following statements. For teens your age, abstinence not having sexual intercourse is a better choice than having sexual intercourse. For some teens under 18 years old, it is a good...
Sounds like a health class to me, sounds like things talked about in health.
Yeah, it is a good decision.
Because it's in your life.
Yeah.
It is a good decision to have a baby.
Actually, it's...
In the past six months...
Junior high, yeah.
We teach abstinence in our junior high program.
Take longer for this to read. "In the past six months, have you talked to your parents or adults in your family about what your parents think about teenagers having sex? Your question is about sex, reasons why you shouldn't have sex at your age, how your life would change if you became a father or mother while you're a teenager, birth control, AIDS, HIV, or other sexually transmitted diseases. Want to remind us of junior high students. How likely do you think that you will choose to have sexual intercourse one more time in the next year?"
That's not part of the survey.
It is a part of a survey they wrote.
But not, not even us.
I don't know how many times I have to stipulate, I understand that. But my, my point is that it's written by the same people.
They probably write a lot of surveys for a lot of different reasons.
No, it's for the California Healthy Kids Survey.
With the organization that wrote the survey.
It's for the California Healthy Kids Survey. It's a module that's probably available to us to give under the same laws if we choose. So many answers of how likely, I'm sure it will not happen, it probably will not happen. There's, there's even a 50, even 50/50 chance that it will or won't happen. It probably will happen, it will happen for sure, if you have had sexual intercourse.
I think that you, you know, that we're getting a whole theory of what do you think is important to teach in, in health class in junior high. A lot of those things are covered in health class in junior high.
So they're the fifth-grade film, they're taught in the fifth-grade film.
But not only that, we have this doubt...
I don't think it's really funny
No, it's not funny.
that we, that we teach, that we teach 12- and 13-year-old kids to think about whether or not they should, they should have sexual intercourse, whether or not...
But you think they're not thinking about that?
No, I think they are thinking about it, but it's not our position. We are not their parents.
But it is being taught, it is being, it is part of the...
Okay, well, I...
It's part of the films that the kids are shown when they're in fifth grade. Maybe it's even fourth grade now.
But this isn't part of the films.
And unfortunately, we all know of the young lady that in seventh and eighth grade, we know of a few over the years, that, yep, if she probably had some parent looking at that survey, maybe would have said something, and she would have been pregnant when she's in seventh and eighth grade. It does happen, I hate to tell you this, but it does happen.
And we're, we're nationally taken from surveys like that.
Let me, let me convince you that I'm not foolish. I, I understand that children under 10 have sex sometimes. I understand that children are sexually abused by their parents sometimes. I don't want our government taking responsibility for teaching sexual behaviors, sexual, what is appropriate, what is not, especially a government that just mandated, that we put into our textbooks that we must find people that are historically significant because they changed their sex, or because they wear clothes of the opposite sex. That, that, this is a state that has shoved down our throat that we will put into books, "This guy's here because he wears dresses. This girl's cute."
You know what, I really would like to get into focus.
You can try real hard, but I don't want you to get offended.
But this has nothing to do with the survey and the memorandum of understanding that we are trying to pass at this point in time. That's a discussion in regards to the whole curriculum...
Well, you know, I am showing you guys, my goal is to show that you guys are not being morally consistent. That, because I believe most of you agree that 8048 was a mistake. And yet, we're going to just pass this as the state tells us to.
We're not passing it.
You're not passing that.
Okay, fine. The other, the other...
You, just a survey, right.
During, during your life, how many people have you had sexual intercourse with? During your abuser months, how many people did you have sexual intercourse?
Chris, is this a political thing you're doing because you want it for television?
I take offense to that.
I know.
It's absolutely... You know, you know the issue, because I don't believe you, or any of the other people on this board, really do what they need to do to send a message back up to the state that we reject what they're doing here. By the way, anybody wants to recall me, go for it.
I'm not for that either.
I, I, I have no desire to put this on TV, I have a desire. You know, you guys all go to your little arts deal, and to all your fundraisers, and drink wine with all your friends, and have a great time. But, but you know, you avoid having confrontations with anybody about things of real import.
But this isn't import to us.
Well, I disagree.
This is not our, this is not within our school district? This is, now, if you would like to make a motion that, at some point, that we should send a letter saying that you've pulled this up, and that you find this inappropriate for any schools, that's a different item, I'm willing to discuss that, and have you read the whole thing, and say, you know, maybe we need to send the state a letter if we don't approve it.
I gotta tell you, I don't hold out much faith that this board would do that.
Well, maybe you need to...
I know that this is a, this is a board that bribed the former employee to not sue us after we terminated them for cause. So I don't count on faith.
You know what, I'd like us to get back to the focus, the...
Excuse me, I need to clarify. No one was bribed, we reached a legal settlement.
Yeah, I call it a...
Well, you can call whatever you will, but I want the record to make it clear that this board voted a legal settlement that was requested by the, by the two attorneys negotiating. And taking words and using them in a way that they're not meant, calling this a test versus a survey for students, that connotes, connotes something different. Using the word bribe as opposed to settlement, maybe what you feel, but in the court of law, the word is settlement. And plain and round words misconstrues, it's, it's the worst thing that politicians do, misrepresenting the facts. And you're a very honorable person, and I know you don't mean to do that.
That the worst thing a politician can do is engage in doublespeak and knock it down to the absolute truth. And the absolute truth is that while that was a legal settlement, it de facto acted as a bribe to prevent a person that we terminated for cause from coming back and suing us.
No, it's not on the agenda. It's not the agenda, and we're trying to remind all people at this table that right now, the agenda item happens to do with the memorandum of understanding, having to do with us administering the California Healthy Kids Survey.
And I would like you to put in a logical... And I would like you to put in Module A.
Module A.
So it's clear that we're not using this other-
We're not using any of the-
I would entertain at this moment a motion to approve item one H.
I say.
Is there a second?
I say.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
No.
All opposed? The motion carries for one. Thank you. Now, moving on to the next item, which is to open a public hearing, um, in pursuant to Education Code six oh one one nine, Education Code six oh four two one, and California Code of Regulations CR nine, Title Five, Section nine five three one. Um, so here are the community in anticipation of assurances for fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve regarding the availability of textbooks and instructional materials. I now declare a public hearing at seven fifteen, and I invite any member of the audience to comment, comment on adoption of Resolution eleven twelve dash twenty to ensure the availability of textbooks and instructional materials and certification of provisions of standards-aligned instructional materials for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve.
Um, I, I would like to ask a question.
Comments from the audience. I'm asking for comments from the audience. So here are no comments from the audience, and then, um, would you like to make an additional comment at this point?
Yeah.
Well, she wants it under the public hearing or your own comments?
I wanted to make sure that the principals, we have a right to comment.
Sure.
They don't have any, if they're short, if they're short books, I mean, it's-
They're the public at this point, is that?
Right.
Yes, they're, they are public at this point. Hearing no comments, and if there are no additional comments, I now declare the public hearing closed at seven, seven, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen? Now, we can move to discuss the action item, which is on our board agenda. It's Action Item two A, and it has to do with adopting the resolution to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials and the certification of the provision for standards-aligned instructional materials for two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. And Janet, this might be your item.
Yes, thank you. You actually stated very clearly the purpose of the motion, um, and the resolution. We are certifying that we have, uh, state-adopted materials in the classrooms and students have textbooks available to them for their studies. And approving this resolution will certify that, that it's so in our school district.
I would entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, inputs? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That one carries five oh. Um, we now have the opportunity to have a first reading of our board policy. It's a new one, thirty-three fifty on travel expenses. Mr. Douglas?
This is my issue, um, and actually, I mean, I'm doing it in conjunction with Assistant Superintendent Business here. There are ed codes that, uh, cover travel expenses. However, there's a, a couple nuances in the travel expense laws that give you choices and options, um, to take. We've had some confusion in this school the last few months about certain portions of it, so I'm presenting this board policy to you. If there's any questions you'd like to have directed, I'm glad to answer anything you might have.
I, I have a question. In the last paragraph, where it says, authorized employees and district credit cards are attended to district business under no circumstance and personal expenses be charged by district credit cards. Thank you.
That was one of the issues that has come up in some gray areas.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated, and I think that everybody can know what to do when